All right, it is six o'clock, so I'll bring today's meeting to order. Would you please stand and help me recite the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
There's a few people in the attendance today I'd like to recognize. Dina Sattler from the Globe, so welcome. Larry Kleeman from Ransom Financial, Larry. And then two guests of the Phi Theta Kappa parents, so Brandy Slattery and Ryan Slattery. They here?
Yes.
Yes, thank you all for joining us. I would read the college mission statement. Dodge City Community College will provide opportunities for high-quality learning and will enhance community and personal development in a student-centered environment. We usually ask for remarks from the audience, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the board today, you're welcome to do so.
I know hearing you mention Dina Sattler, but I would like to have her come up and just introduce herself. She is the new publisher at the Daily Globe. She's over Garden City Newspaper, Daily Globe, and Pratt. So, Dina, go ahead.
First of all, thanks for having me. I really appreciate it. I told Dr. Nolte, Dr. Swender never invited me to dinner at Garden City Community College in 14 years, so we're already ahead of the curve here in Dodge City. So, I appreciate that. It's a nice group of people. As Andrea said, I'm a publisher of now the Dodge City Daily Globe, the Garden City Telegram, and the Pratt Tribune, and then we also have two weeklies in St. John and Greensburg, of course. I've been in Garden City about 14 years, so I'm familiar with southwest Kansas. My husband and I love it out here. So, I'm really excited about taking on the Globe and Pratt as additional responsibilities. And I've heard all about the rivalry between Garden City and Dodge City, and I can tell you, our first project right out of the gate was a combo magazine between Dodge City and Garden City that I think you'll be pleased when you see it come out in about a week or so, covering all the tourism and different amenities of both communities. And my highest priority will be to work together. Our two newspaper staffs work together. First thing I noticed about the Globe is that they need more people, so my goal is to increase the staff. In the meantime, I'll have the folks in Garden City help. So, we're already pursuing a spirit of cooperation, and I'm excited about getting to know more about what the Board of Trustees does too. We have a fine community college in Garden City, I think you know that, and I know this one does wonderful work as well. So, really look forward to working with all of you, and please feel free to reach out, stop by, I'd love to take you to lunch, so.
Let's have a question.
Sure.
Did you say you had amenities in Garden City?
We have a couple.
Really?
We have a few, yeah. See, there is a rivalry, right? There it is. There it is. But please feel free to reach out. We can't do our job without people letting us know what's happening, what they're interested in seeing in the paper, and on our website, so appreciate it. Other questions? This is your rare opportunity to ask me the questions, okay? Usually, we ask the questions, but does anybody else have any questions that I can maybe try to answer? I don't want to take too much of your time, so.
You'll be welcome on campus anytime.
Appreciate that. I appreciate that. I really love sports, so I'm looking forward to the, again, the sports rivalry, and my plan is to cheer for whoever the home team is. That's the only way I can figure out how to do it, so.
We're always home.
Okay. That's even better. That's good scheduling. Thanks, everybody.
All right, thanks.
Thank you for coming.
All right, next up, we'll do the approval of the minutes. Now, you see the one correction to the March 27 meeting, so I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes when ready.
Mr. Chairman, I believe they approved just the question.
Second. Okay, just to be clear, is this both sets? Florstein? Is this both, you're approving both sets of minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Wanted to make sure that the group is aware of that, and there was a second, is that as well? Dan, was that your intention? All right, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Let's move on to the completion of our agenda. There's two items that are additional, or one item additional and one removed. Give you a chance to look over those. And is there any changes or revisions to the consent agenda?
I'd like to discuss, well, one A and one C. I mean, A, one A and C. One A and one C.
One C, okay. We'll move those out of consent and into the regular session. Anything else?
Number four, I have some questions about, also, number four under Business Services.
All right, anything further? Seeing that is, get approval of the agenda?
I approve that.
I second the motion.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor of the agenda has changed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, reports to the board, we'll start with Student Government Association.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Mr. Chairperson and President Nolte. Tonight, we start off with Art Club. In the month of April, the Art Club has traveled to Denver to visit the Denver Art Museum and the galleries in the Rhino District. They painted a mural at Wright Park Zoo and participated in the Your Love Rally for Dodge City High School. They are currently getting ready to show their artwork that they exhibited last Friday in the Little Theater. International Club will be doing a float for the Cinco de Mayo Parade. They are wrapping up their Spanish classes and their leadership meetings, which was, I mean, sorry. On April 27th, they voted for the new president for their club. Phi Theta Kappa took four members who attended the International Convention in Kansas City, Missouri. They also did the highway cleanup on April 10th. Their last meeting was April 24th, and they hosted a movie night for their members in the Little Theater on April 27th. Student Nursing Association finished their fundraiser, and they will be having three scholarships for next year consisting of $500 each, and they also donated funds for a nursing student who is battling cancer. Student Government Association, in the month of April, went to the high school to recruit members for Student Senate for the upcoming school year, and as well as letting them know of clubs that were offered on campus. April 9th, they hosted the Bongo Ball in the Student Activities Center, and then on April 17th, they helped with the rodeo showcase. April 18th, they hosted the Archery Airstrike in the Student Activities Center, and right now, they are focusing on the Second Annual Carnival that will be hosted on May 3rd, and they are also preparing for new elections for a new president and activities chair for next year. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vanessa. You guys have been busy, and I really applaud what you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the Academic Tutor of the Month, so Ms. Killian.
Tonight, we're honoring Rachel Slattery as the April Tutor of the Month. Rachel is obviously a tutor for us. She's also a member of Phi Theta Kappa. She is from Spearville and graduated from Spearville High School. Her parents are Darren and Tammy Slattery. She currently holds a 4.0, and her major is Chiropractic. She is going to transfer to Cleveland Chiropractic in Kansas City, and she's been already accepted into that school, and will start the doctorate program in January. She's also been a member of the girls' basketball team in 2015 and 16, and she's been a member of the volleyball team in '16, '17, and '17, '18. Is that right? Could I get that right? Okay. Rachel has just been a great joy for us. She has tutored in a lot of the sciences and some of the harder classes that it's hard to find tutors in, and she's just got a real way of bringing the subject matters down to where people can understand them easily. So, she's a great treasure, and she's going to be hard to replace. So, we would like to congratulate Rachel on April Tutor of the Month.
Let me take a couple. Thank you.
We had a written report, Dina, to Student Services, Ms. Lanning. Did you have anything further you wanted to add to that, or you wanted to report? Or you just want to have the written part?
Just the written part.
Okay.
But I do want to just kind of briefly mention that graduation is coming.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did miss one, so.
Graduation is this weekend. I am late at your park, at your place's invitation to the student recognition ceremony, the distinguished alumnus. I will be sending out an email later on this week regarding the script for graduation and where you need to be. Everybody should have their counseling out for me. I have yours for tonight, so if you have any questions, catch you later.
All right, thank you. I did skip over, and I apologize for that, for the Phi Theta Kappa Student of the Month. Brandy, you have the floor.
Our student of the month this month is Erin Slattery. The night of the Slatteries. She is from here in Dodge. Her parents are here, Ray and Brandy Slattery. She has a 4.0 GPA, and her major is Early Childhood Education, and she is a sophomore planning to transfer to Kansas State University. She's also a student ambassador and captain for the dance team, and she's been just such a wonderful participant at Phi Theta Kappa. She's always going above and beyond and helping us out, and anytime I'm like, "Help," she's right there. So, she's just been such a wonderful addition, so. Thank you, Erin.
A 4.0. Wow. Impressive.
I'll take a couple. One, two, three. Thank you.
Okay, next report we had in our book was Ryan's. Was there anything else you needed to add or wanted to add?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Then we go to other reports. We have a nursing director, Michelle Haley. We will listen to your report. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for having me. Just, I have a few things that I can brag on our department about. We have, our current enrollment is 44 students. We currently have 25 Level 1 and 19 Level 2 students. For the fall, we're anticipating 30 Level 1 students in the fall. We've already sent out 27 letters, and so we actually have some late applicants we're reviewing right now. We will have 25 Level 2 students. Our NCLEX pass rates, in front of you, you should have a bar chart. I'm a little bit of a nerd, so. This is comparing our pass rates with a couple local colleges as well. Our lowest pass rate in the recent past was in 2014. It was 56.76 percent. I'm happy to report for 2017 that we have a 95 percent pass rate, 95.83 percent. We worked really, really hard to get that up there. As a result as well, we just recently got a letter from ASIN, who's our accreditor for nursing. We're fully accredited without conditions. We were put on conditions two years ago, but we are now off of conditions, and our next review will be in spring of 2023. We are fully staffed with faculty at this point, and everybody's working hard. Some of them don't have their masters yet, but they're working very hard to get that. Couple of them are actually working on their doctorate as well. We, according to pass rates, we get a report from the National Council of State Boards of Nursing every year that tells us our rank in the state. It doesn't tell us who is everywhere, but tells us our rank. We are actually ranked number six of 33 nursing schools in the state of Kansas.
Wow, that's amazing.
So, we tried to get in the top five, but we're working on it. Our pending ceremony, in front of you, you actually have an invitation as well to our pending ceremony. It's Saturday morning at 10:00. We will have 19 students graduating with their RN, or for their RN this Saturday, so they've worked really, really hard. All of us have worked super hard, and we have an amazing team, and so we'll keep doing, keep pushing forward. Questions that you have for me, anybody?
Do you think there was a problem back when we were low about changing your test setup? Something change?
We, yes. We actually, a lot of the faculty attended NCLEX test writing seminars to learn how to better mimic the NCLEX exam or licensure exam, and we've increased the rigor of the program as well. We've added a test leveling policy, so they start at the lower end when they first start, and by the time they graduate, they're at NCLEX level questions. I think that's had a huge impact as well, so.
Do you think you'll be competitive with those salaries now that we've been able to go ahead and do the upgrade?
Absolutely, absolutely. And again, I greatly appreciate that, because that has been huge for us as well.
This board here?
Yeah, I greatly appreciate, we all do. We greatly appreciate that. We have some very, very skilled people who've come on to teach, and they're rock stars. That's the best thing I can say about them, so.
On behalf of the board, I'd really like to extend to you how proud we are of what your team has done.
Thank you.
And this could be, is a jewel of the college.
Thank you.
And how we hope that that program will grow and adapt to the environment that's out there and be able to fulfill the needs that are there. We're just extremely proud of what you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
And one more question about the acceptance level.
Yes.
You've increased those requirements.
Yes, we have increased the admission requirements. We increased the entrance GPA from a 2.5 to a 2.75. We've also increased our T score, which is like our entrance exam that we give. It was a 58 for minimum, and we actually raised it to a 65 and then realized we probably overshot that a little bit, so we kind of lowered it back to just 62 instead of all the way back down. Looking at the data in the past, most of our students who have not been successful were under that 61 to 60 mark, and so we don't want to waste their time, but we want to encourage them and them be successful as well, so.
Michelle, in the future, don't you think we need to add more programs in the area of healthcare?
Oh, absolutely. Allied Health, for sure, especially rurally. There's such a short supply of radiology, of respiratory therapy, of physical therapy assistance, those kinds of things, so that would be an exciting way to grow, for sure. And phlebotomy is actually something we frequently get a call for if we have a phlebotomy program, so that would actually be a really good one. And we can go on some of the curriculum that we already have to be able to do that, so.
All right. Well, once again, thank you very much, and.
Thank you. My pleasure. It's our pleasure. It's not just at all.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go on to trustees' reports. So, Florstein?
Well, I'm excited and definitely upbeat about all the good things that are happening at the college lately. There's a long list, and one that I just really want to mention is our wonderful group of students and the student government leadership. We have especially a gifted student body, I believe, and they are showing it to the community, and I just want them also to know that I'm proud of that.
Thank you.
I just, I just wanted to comment that I have been involved with the foundation executive council and also with the auction committee, and I'm very excited about this scholarship auction that will be the first part of November of this year. I hope that it will be sort of the originator of one to continue for many, many years. It's been very exciting. That's been very exciting. And then I've been involved, some with Dr. Nolte and with Ryan, considering the Mariah Fund and the radio station, and I really want to say that I want that to work out. I think it's beneficial, both to High Plains Public Radio and to the college and to the community, which is where I come in as a representative. I'm a trustee on the Mariah Foundation, and that's where the grant comes from, so I'm very excited about that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'd like to dovetail on what you said there, Maya, on some things. A couple weeks ago, you know, I had the privilege and the honor to attend an event at Dr. Nolte's former college, which he was honored. And 10 years ago, he had started a, it was called Brilliance, and it was a fundraiser, and it was started about 10 years ago, and it was due to the need for students taking dual credit hours and weren't able to pay for it. And till to this date, they've been able to award 1,140 scholarships. And the night I was there was also a fundraiser like Maya talked about, and they raised over $260,000. You know, and I, it was a very great, it was a black tie event, and I was approached by probably 50 faculty and staff that were just telling how great Dr. Nolte was and appreciated all the efforts that he made, and this was one of the things he did for him in growing the school. And I'd like very much for us to see us build something like that here and create for and get our community re-engaged with the college. We can do great things. I think there was an announcement of a pretty major donation to the college here of late, so would you like to add something to that?
Is it okay to add that?
I think would be a good platform for you to do so.
We have had a very major donation for the Student Activities Center by Jim Coffin and Jag Construction. They have donated the parking lot that was supposed to be installed along with the building, and they're doing it at no cost to the college. They're doing it at no cost to the foundation. This is an end-kind donation, which is really kind of fantastic. And then we have another donation that came through actually a little bit earlier this year that was for the entryway there at the college, and that press release will actually be going out tomorrow, and it is from the Harshberger family. The entire family has had three generations at this college and has a love for this college that they want to see it grow, they want to see it expand, and so it's been wonderful working with Gary and Melanie and Gary's mom, and you know, his kids are involved, and so this is, it's not just Gary and Melanie that are part of this generous donation, it's the whole family. It's all three generations. So, we're hoping to get some more of those fantastic donations with these families here in town, get re-engaged with them. A lot of them have never been talked to, they've never been approached, and it just warms my heart to see people like the Harshbergers and the Kaufmans, and quite frankly, our major gifts chairman, Greg Goff, he's also, you know, got a love for this program that, for the foundation and the college, and is constantly giving of his time, and his family gave a large gift several years ago, as you all know. So, that's kind of our, that's our intention with this auction, is to get up there and make it happen.
Can you talk about the track?
I can talk about the track. I can't release the name just yet without that donor's permission, because they don't want it released until the track is actually finished. But that particular donor is a business owner here in town who is very, very interested in the health of our community and has donated the entire project for that walking track. We've got several community members that are very excited about that. We've got more and more community members coming in every day to utilize that space. I've seen Arrowhead West has become a really consistent presence nearly every day out there. Their clients are coming out, and they're getting them to come out and walk around that track. Our track team, our cross-country team, when the weather's nasty, they're up there practicing and working on that track. So, we will start that construction on July 1st. I got that date confirmed on Thursday of last week, so once we get the contract signed, things will start moving forward on that. So, hopefully, I will have, if I can talk the donor into letting me do a press release a little earlier than that, I will, but I do know that he is very, very excited, he and his family, for this particular opportunity to give back to the college, and he is discussing giving back to the college in the future in other ways, such as scholarships and helping get some programs started here at the college. So, it's relationships, it's what we do, and we need to start that up again, and I'm glad to be a part of it. I'm glad, Gary, I'm glad you're a part of it, and I'm glad, a lot of these board members in this room, you all are a part of it, so it's exciting to see.
One more?
Mm-hmm.
You want to talk about, or do you want Jake to talk about Mr. Nelson's gift?
I can do it, yeah. We have a donor by the name of Jerry Nelson, who is from around the Beaumont, Texas area, and last year, when was that, Veda Fall, when we did the rodeo? He donated a very large gift to our rodeo program to help with the chutes and alleys that were failing, that were kind of a hazard to the students and the livestock, and so that's all been replaced. That very generous donation is also going to allow that rodeo program to continue to grow and make sure that they have all their equipment. Very recently, he also donated a lot of scholarship money for the men's basketball team. It's $120,000, and so we're very, very excited. For him, this is going to be a long-term relationship with this particular donor. We're very, very happy that he believes that much in Dodge City Community College. Obviously, with Title IX, we will be matching that $120,000 between several sources, the foundation, the college, several sources, Veda and I have talked about it. So, it's just one of those relationships that you are very, very proud to have. He used to have a relationship with another college in Texas, and he chose Dodge City instead, so we're very grateful.
They recently asked him for a gift of $750,000. He says.
He declined it.
He said, "My money goes to Dodge City Community College."
He did, yes, so.
I do applaud the both of you for cultivating those relationships. You threw me a little bit of a curveball. I was not expecting you to announce our deal, so.
That was with the permission of your wife.
So, a little embarrassed right now, but I was really wanting.
Thank you, sir.
I really, really wanted to point out, you know, Mr. Nelson's and Coffin's, and I was not aware that the donors for the track was holding, so that's all dovetails into what we're trying to do here at the school. And just on our family deal, we decided to do that back in November, and been just kind of withholding the announcement, just, we're kind of private people, so.
Yes.
Anyway, but thank you.
You're welcome.
But I'm just, I'm just very proud of our foundation, and thank goodness, they're doing some good work, and we're very proud. I think Maya and Jeremy and I are on the committee together, right? It's just amazing, it's amazing how people want to give money in this community, in opening their pocketbooks and their friendships and things like that. And when you, you call it friend-raising, that's what it's called, it's friend-raising. It's not, it's not donations, it's being, having friends out there that want to help, and it's good to see that people are out there wanting to do things like that. So, thank y'all for all that you do.
And they want to be a part of a good, winning program, and I think what we heard from the nursing, and great strides there, and there's so many avenues in this college that we can and are doing great strides with, and I'll help. we can and are doing great strides with and how to help build that bridge to the community.
We want to fill that special event center.
Right. There's one other thing that I wanted to bring up in my report. Last month, I mentioned that we would have some information, a tutorial on the expense reports that you had, so I'd like to approach that now. It wasn't in your schedule, so I want to do it now in the trustees' report. So would you care to, you had, Sandy, you had a, you know, kind of brief us on the different line items that you could do, and there's kind of a code-
Right.
-that we have. I'd like, if we can, make sure that the trustees have that code tonight, if you could.
Was it emailed, was it Carla?
Was it emailed out, so everybody has that?
And everybody got a hard copy.
Okay, great. I thought they had, but if you can kind of get them up to speed, so that way when they're reviewing those reports, they'll know a little bit more about it, and some of their own questions can be answered by themselves if they just knew a little bit more about how these things are presented.
Well, what you've gotten that I think Carla sent out earlier is a list of all the checks that were issued. And so basically, it's just going to list your check number and the payee. And in the middle of the paper, you'll see the account number. That's how you're going to determine who's chosen the purchase. That's what your chart of accounts is for, so that you can, if you look at that first one, it's O-13690. If you look up 3690, you'll see what department is making that purchase. The description's on the far right, so.
Okay. Is there any questions for Sandy on how the coding works?
It's a long list.
It is a heck of a long list of, so that's why I wanted to, everybody that, so that as you do review those, that you're a little more up to speed on what you're getting in front of you. So my intention is that if you have questions about any of these billings, then get ahold of me, and then if there's enough of them, we'll have a special session or workshop session to go over them. So we will not carve out time in a regular board meeting to go over them, but depends on how many we have, then let's reach out to me and see the quantities and the questions. You can address them offsite, or if there's enough of them, we'll have a work session.
I might, yeah, I might add on your chart of accounts. The ones that are broken down with the second designation is our O-1 and our O-2 funds, because the second designation is going to tell you whether it's nursing, or welding, or basketball, or the business office. After you get through O-1 and O-2, you just have funds, and those funds represent all of our grants. Some funds that we have for purposes of processing all the flight program stuff, so you'll see a lot of the flight program, the number 10, Start the Fund, going it back out to the VA and that kind of stuff. So if you have any questions on that, yeah.
Well, so I hope the trustees are a little more equipped with information as you read this lengthy document that you'll have, the information.
It helps us explain the effort that we get, mostly.
Yes, okay. That's all I had in my report. So, Dr. Presley?
I think everybody covered it. I was at the foundation meeting, but we had a great foundation report, and the foundation's doing a phenomenal job, and I want to thank all the donors and all the contributors, and especially Chris's hard work. I've seen more accomplished in her short tenure here so far than what I'd seen in the combined previous years that I've been involved with the board. So I can't thank her enough for that, and the whole entire foundation for their dedication. And keeping in mind, too, that during this whole entire process, they've also been melding the foundation and the-
Endowment.
Endowment. I'm sorry, thank you, I was trying to blink. And so it's just been phenomenal to watch them. It's a great board. I love getting to their meetings, and they work well together and are making good improvements for our college, and we thank them. That's all I have, otherwise.
I'd like to comment about our students, too. What a positive role model you guys are at for the community and for the college, as well as going over to the high school, and then we get to see in the newspaper, all of these seniors wanting to come to Dodge City Community College and their, you know, top-notch senior students from area schools and our own community. So I'm very proud of all the work you guys do. And then, when we talk about being part of the community, unless you've been flocked and had a lot of flamingos put in your yard, you won't understand it, but I have a lot of flamingos in my yard. And then, in order to get them removed, the American Cancer Society, I make a donation, and it's very dear to my heart. But what made it so special to me is down here on the bottom, it says that there's a silent auction on the day of Hope Glow, June 1st, at Dodge City Community College Student Activities Center. And when we connect with our community on special events like this, and yes, I've got pink flamingos everywhere, that I was so excited because I can buy one of those at this silent auction. So I'm going to buy one and see all of you at some point with a pink flamingo. So I appreciate everything you do.
I get to visit with lots of young people in my life, and past and present, kids on the way up here are excited about coming. Kids have come through here, they're teaching a school, got their start here, or nurses out in the community now, got their start here and finished here, and they're just as proud as punch that they came here and they had a great experience. So I'm really proud that we're doing well by young people.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you all for making that. So that ends the report, so let's move on to board action items. Attorney Curbs, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it was mentioned about the partnership between High Plains Public Radio and the college, which was begun months, actually years ago. I remember a meeting that HPPR people were here, and we moved from here down to the lower level, and then further back, and we all went out and saw all of our vehicles were damaged by hail. So that'd been two years ago, I think, in May. So we have been talking with High Plains Public Radio to try to finalize its use of KONQ. And through the process, their attorney, John King, had some questions about the license and the status of our license. And what we found, or what appears we've found, is that there was a construction permit that was actually obtained a number of years ago when the station location was moved. And that construction permit was obtained, but the follow-up to when the construction was completed wasn't finalized with the FCC. So there's some work to be done with the FCC to clear up the license status for KONQ. And the FCC is kind of a world unto itself, and so we need some expertise to help with finalizing or exploring and finalizing anything that needs to be done in order to establish the license in good standing. And so we're suggesting tonight that the college hire John King. He's an attorney in Florida. We've had probably a half dozen telephone conversations with Mr. King over the past couple of years. I believe that he expresses good knowledge about the FCC and would be a good person to help us, or to help the college in dealing with those license issues. And so what you have before you is an engagement proposal that Mr. King sent to us April 10th, and we're asking the board to approve it. Mr. King's hourly rate for his services is $480 per hour and plus expenses. I believe his approach is to, first of all, get the complete information and then work with the FCC commission staff to try to find out exactly what needs to be done in order to remedy any problems that exist. So that's our recommendation.
Any questions on this issue?
Do we have an estimate of what it might cost us, or an idea?
We don't. We don't, because we're unsure what is going to have to be done.
Now, the, well, just kind of my understanding of it is, since we have the construction, they still have our radio license down as operating out of the library. So all this time, we've been operating without a valid license. And so there, I forget what they are, but I think the fees from the FCC could be, have they ever gone over the potential fees?
No.
They were substantial per day.
We looked at it, too.
So we need to have a very good attorney to go in there that can work with the FCC and try to minimize the impact of this and hopefully get it done with minimal damage. But-
What was kind of interesting, the license itself has been renewed and extends into early 2023, maybe.
I don't know.
But the, some of the back work wasn't finished.
Right, still at the wrong, we're operating from the wrong location is the problem. And that in there is the rub. So, and you're dealing with the FCC.
Mr. Chairman, it sounds like we missed some possible upsetting news, so I will move that we hired Mr. King.
There's motions, there's second?
Yes, second.
Second. Questions further? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay. Thank you. Next up is the donation to, from Great Western Dining. Mr. President, permit?
Great Western Dining donates $5,000 there each year for, to the college. And in the past, we've always put it into a fund, and it goes for the expenses of operating the student cafeteria and this building. So I would like to recommend that we again accept that donation for $5,000 to be used as expenditures for the student cafeteria area.
Okay, so that is held specifically for that purpose?
Yes, it is.
On the line item?
It has its own lineup.
Okay, all right.
I move.
Motion, second?
I'll second.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay.
The next one is the Great Western Dining contract for the next fiscal year, 2018, 2019. The only change in this contract is that we have asked that the daily meal rate be increased by 2%, which is what we previously had recommended to the board to raise the fees in the resident's lot for the meals. So we have asked, they are asking for 2% rates. Also, the other, there is one more change, and that is the reimbursement of, it's John's salary, actually, what he gets, we pay a portion of it, so that he keeps it open during the summer for football camps and kids that are here during the summertime. So, and that is, it was $6,900 last year for 13 weeks, and it'll go to $7,800 this year. So we're asking approval of the contract with the 2% raise in casual meals. And that's passed on to the students.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment about our food service. Most of you have been in other colleges for meetings, and you've learned that we are unique in the quality of our food service to our students. So I move that this recommendation be accepted.
Okay. Motion on the floor? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, discussion?
I agree as far as James, you talk to the kids out there, they love eating here. They like the food.
And they get enough.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay. All right.
The next one is for the financing package for the upgrade conversion from Zins Bar. And I'm going to ask that Larry Kleeman from Ransom Finance, we usually have John Haas here, he's not available tonight, so we welcome Larry, and he's going to take us through the resolution and the process of the financing.
Thank you, Veda. Good evening, my name is Larry Kleeman, I'm with Ransom Financial Group. As Veda mentioned, you're probably more familiar with John Haas, my colleague. He couldn't make it tonight, but we at Ransom Financial Group are financial advisors. We help local governments, cities, counties, schools, counties like yourself borrow money, typically by issuing municipal bonds or leases. And we work hand in hand with a bond counsel. Kevin Cowan of Gilmore and Bell is your usual bond counsel. Usually, it's Kevin and John here. Interesting, Kevin, he's actually on his way, I got a text, he might show up at the last minute when I'm about done here, but maybe, maybe not. Interesting, I'm also a Western Kansas guy, I actually grew up north of Laken on a farm, so a little more familiar with Garden City than Dodge City, but right now I'm living in Wichita, working with John Haas there at Ransom Financial Group. To finance the software improvements tonight, we have before your resolution, which authorizes a lease purchase or a certificate of purchase in that lease purchase. It's similar to a bond issue, in that we're going to go to the public markets, which means we'll take a, cast a wide net to solicit bids from all various banks and underwriters to purchase this from you at a low interest rate. The plan is to have the bids due next month, I believe it's May 22nd, whatever your next meeting is. I think John Haas will actually be here for that one. And then we'll analyze the bids, and then you would approve the lowest interest rate to approve. And again, we're talking tonight about a lease purchase or a COP, which is similar to a bond, where you break up the lease into small pieces and sell those off. Well, tonight, the resolution authorizes us to prepare documents and to solicit those bids. A POS or a preliminary official statement will be prepared by us, our firm. And we have helped structure the debt. Right now, we have it structured as an eight-year lease. John has estimated interest rate will average about 2.8% based on the latest interest rates. So, and Kevin Cowan, who may walk in any minute, he is bond counsel. He makes sure everything we do is legal, by the book, and so forth. If you have any questions on the process, let me know. Otherwise, John Haas will be back here next month with the bids and walk you through the final steps.
Okay. Thanks, Larry. Any questions for Larry?
You said eight-year.
Yeah, right now, it's for an eight-year. And Veda, I think he might have worked with you on establishing that amount.
It's going to run us about $75,000 a year, which we can work into our budgeting process, and we can spread it out over eight years so that it won't affect our cash flow.
And the total issue would be $570,000. A portion of that, about $20,000, is for cost of issuance to pay financial advisor, bond counsel fees and so forth.
That's the additional fees that we're talking about?
Right.
In the proposal.
Right, $20,000 of that $570,000 would go toward paying cost of issuing.
What's the other $20,000?
The other, yes, because of the way it's set up on equipment lease, there was some listed items in that that were training, and that doesn't qualify. And so I talked with Kevin and visited with him about it, and he said, "Veda, have you purchased anything during the year that you could list on here, get refunded for it, and then that would give me money?" Because I cannot capitalize training. And in the software package, there was some training, and that's the only way I could go back and finance it and get the money available to pay for that. And the other is, there's about $43,000 that I have requested in case we get into an issue, and I can have a third party come in and do some report, write some reports and do some report designing for us. Now, if I don't need this money, I'll turn it around and it'll just go back against to pay off the lease purchase. But I just don't want to get in a spot where we have issues and I don't have the cash flow to fund that. So- So I'm requesting more money than I hope we find is necessary. But if we don't need it, it'll go back against the loan, but if I need it, I'll have it.
I was kind of hoping to see the Genza Bar issue kind of be a standalone thing. Is there any possibility of taking the Ram and the Snow Dog off and just paying for those? Do we have?
We've already paid for those. But I was going to use that for the portion.
For the cash?
For the cash.
Okay.
All right. Further questions, Mr. Kliman?
Seems reasonable.
Veda, is there any, you know, I've kind of gone through the information you gave us today or for today. It just looks like, you know, item 01 on back end there is $467,000 and cash in the bank, $501,000. I, I don't know if it's, those things are usable for this kind of items or not, but, and we had number, item number 10, the fund is $1,300,000. I just really wish we could find some way to pay for this without borrowing more money. Is there any way that these funds can be, you know, $100,000 here and $70,000 there and get to the point where we can just pay for this?
We, we, we're paying off our debt at $1 million every year. Goes again, we're paying off debt. And yes, I hate to take on more debt, but right now I'm trying to keep us at a level because HLC, you know, costs for debt. We have just pulled ourselves above where we need to be and I don't want to take a chance on going back there. So I'm trying to just keep the cash flow as balanced every year and I just can't take on this kind of debt. I mean, take, I'm sorry, take on this kind of expenses within our current budget.
Well, I know the public is real concerned about debt that we have and, and you know, you pay off a million a year, but then we're adding another half a million on. So we're really only going to pay off half a million itself. And I know the public is really concerned about the debt we've got out here.
Yes, I don't doubt.
I just hate to, to take on another half a million dollars if we've got any way to pay for it out of funds that we have, you know?
I just feel like to take that right now, I'm, I'm working really hard to bring in the budget this year. I, I'm afraid I'm going to fall short, but I just can't take on this kind of. And then I've got to look at the, we're trying to come up with $350,000 for the gym. I can't finance that. That's going to have to be cash. I can't finance it because I have no means of financing that unless I take it out for a vote. And I'm not going to take it out for a vote, I'm going to have to pay cash for it. So I, when I can finance it, I'm going to go ahead and finance this and then take care of the gym with cash.
Okay, well, you know my concerns.
I know your concerns, my concerns also.
And there was a concern even today, you know, why are we having the graduation and, you know, moving it to the, to a different location? It's because our, as we all know, the, in the special events center or activity center, the sound can't hear. And so that's another thing we're going to have to, as a foundation, we're going to have to go out there and look for that also. These are things that, they're doable, but we have to work through all that. And so we're working as hard as we can finding people out there that might be helping us with that.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that discussion again. I've thought of that too. But I also appreciate that we cannot go to the bottom if we have an emergency coming. We've got to have a little leeway. So I appreciate that.
Agreed, all right. Thanks, Veda.
Kevin Cowan arrived too, in case you have any legal questions on that.
Hi, Kevin.
Any further questions? We need to take a motion to approve. Resolution. So I entertain a motion to approve the resolution to start process.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. All right, next up, Ms. Hazel Flores, you get the floor, foundation event request.
Last month, the board very graciously approved series number 708 for the consumption of alcohol on campus. Not the sale of alcohol, but the consumption of it. And we're very grateful for that. That was kind of a precursor to our intention of getting the auction onto campus so we can get the community involved with what we're doing here, get them to see the new activity center. We've got people that still have never been inside it and they're, and when I talk to them about the auction coming onto campus, it's met with a very positive vibe. So, and positive comments. So in front of you is a consideration form asking for permission to have our auction on November 2nd, 2018 in the Student Activity Center. The doors will open at 5:30 with the dinner starting at 6 and the live auction starting at 7.
Make a motion to approve?
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you much, we're excited, we're looking forward to it. All right, go to item F, the 2018-19 tuition fees for the flight instructor program. So, Ryan?
Dr. Nolte, Chairman Harshberger, Board of Trustees, good evening. This evening, we are seeking approval for the flight instructor program fees for 2018-19. And you should have in your packet a fee schedule, if you, if you will. That first really, two-thirds of the page is really the standard. That's Dot City Community College kind of things across all, all programs. The focus is really down there where you see the FAA certifications. That's where there has been some, some changes. Two of the changes, which is in the recommendation sheet, excuse me, has been a reduction in hours, which in turn will consequently will be have a reduction in, in cost. The two main focuses or two main reasons for that reduction in hours and the reduction in cost is, one, to align ourselves more with what other flight programs across the country are, are doing. And then two, possibly more importantly, if you will, these fees have been set by and large by VA recommendations and guidance. So those are the two most important reasons for the reduction in hours, which will cause a reduction in cost. But I think both will be beneficial, speed up the process of completion, knock down a few barriers. And in turn, that aligns us with what others across the country are doing, as well as aligns us what guidance we're getting from the, from the VA. One other thing I'd like to bring out as well was in the recommendation sheet. We have taken out two classes as part of our certification, the night vision goggles and the turbine transition. And those were, we've been doing those for a while now, but the reason those were taken out is the VA had informed us that we're the only program in the country that was requiring those. So we took those out as well, once again, just to, to align. So that's the recommendation for, for the, for this evening. Any questions I might be able to, to answer?
Would those be electives if they didn't require them?
Well, if we're not, yeah, if they're no longer part of the actual requirement, they could be an elective possibly somewhere within the associate's degrees, but we were making them a requirement for some of the certifications. So in that sense, it wouldn't make any sense to offer it any longer. They can pick up other electives that we already offer on the, on the books to fulfill those requirements.
I guess my question was that some people might really need to know that, so.
Oh, yes, I, I agree. Yes, ma'am, there's definitely value in those, in those courses. So it's something that I could explore with Dr. John, I'm happy to have that conversation. But since no other programs were providing that, that's why we decided to take that out. But that's a very valid point.
Even requested, we would not be able to provide it?
That I do not know. I'd have to follow up on that question. Yeah, let me follow up for you.
Okay.
And I'll send a message.
Those are used?
Absolutely. I'll, I'll follow up on that, I'll send a message back through Carla to disseminate to the board if that's okay with everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are we still doing all this business through Universal Helicopter?
At this time, yes, Dan, we are.
Are we moving towards another vendor or?
Yes, we are.
And when will that happen?
I, Glenn?
Hopefully by the end of this year.
Okay. And I believe that vendor is also in the Phoenix area.
It is.
Is it going to be quite a lot cheaper?
Be quite a lot different in terms of the arrangement.
Yes, sir. I noticed that last month we wrote $2,259,000 in checks to Universal Helicopter.
That was for leases.
There's a lot of us individual names, of course, but on there, I don't know who the individuals are.
Well, that is a good question, Veda, would that be the transfer of the veterans fees?
It's a pilot, it's a pilot.
These, these are a lot cheaper than the students you're watching, like that we are paying this semester. They've gone down in quite a few credit hours, like from 75 to 35 and 40. What you're seeing is the, the, the flight fees that are due UHI to use of the helicopters and everything. And they're going out, the way we bill them out is we list the student's name so that they can tell who to apply them to on their end on what account.
So those are students?
Those are students that were paid, that their flight fees come through us and go out to UHI.
The VA benefit, right, the VA benefit comes in. And then we give that to, the money to UHI, it's transferred.
Does the amount coming in ever show up on, on our check?
Not on the check, it's a deposit, it comes in an electronic wire.
Okay. Well, I noticed, I just noticed that we wrote the check to one person last month for $99,999.99. Penny short of $100,000 to one person.
What check number are you looking at?
I'm looking on page four of this report, the top name.
Okay, that's, that's Universal Helicopter.
Well, there's a lot of Universal Helicopters there.
Right, that's who, that's who runs the flight program.
Okay, but you see it has a name behind it.
Right, that's for that student.
Okay, so one student we paid Universal, $100,000 for that one student for that one month.
That's for a semester. That would be whatever the course he, that student's taking.
Okay.
And I don't know what course that is that the student's taking, but my guess is it's the large helicopter, the R44, and that's for this semester.
Well, you know, if you go through there, you, there's a lot of checks for $35,000, $40,000.
Sure, and do you know how many students we have?
No, I do not. Not a student, I don't. That's like the one on the page before that.
Dan, we're not going to go through those items. So if you have questions after you had that tutorial, then bring them up and we'll have a work session, so. So anything further for Ryan? Okay. Take a motion to, Flohrstein, you have something?
No, I just said thank you.
Okay. We take a motion to approve new, new fees for the flight instructor program. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
I'd say, Mr. Chairman, that I really am excited about the possibility of a new vendor, a new contractor. And I'm looking forward to some interesting reports from the program.
Well, I'm happy to see it getting this thing cleaned up and then Ryan, just getting the, the fees in line with what VA expects. Because before they were not. So that's good, good movement that way. Just brought up that we will be operating with a new vendor and that'll get us operating within VA's good graces. So it's about time that we have some professionalism involved here. So thanks to the administration for that. Okay, we had two items moved into the regular board out of CIT. That was item 1A, that will be item G. So, and then H will be 1C and I will be 4. So we'll start with 1A. Item G.
Well, I noticed that we got this handout and we had $2,860,000 plus in expenses. But like I said, $2,259,000, that went to Universal Helicopter. Another $92,000 went to the VA for the helicopter program. So out of that $286,000, we've got about $2,350,000 going to the helicopter program. And I haven't seen any income statements from the helicopter program, don't know how much is coming in. We don't see any of that, we just see this is what's going out. There needs to be some kind of balance, balance in this thing. And also don't quite understand how we spent $2,350,000 on the helicopter program. And I don't see, I think we spent over a million dollars on salaries. Is that correct?
Yes, I heard you said it runs up.
A little over a million?
Mm-hmm.
And, and how does that balance, the checks issued at $2,860,000?
Well, VA sent, like, first of all, those aren't paychecks, you know?
Those are just expenses.
Those are account payment checks. And the money that comes in from the VA goes straight out to Universal. So those, that's just a call you're seeing is, is a flow in and a flow out.
Does any of it stay?
Tuition fees, aviation fees, we get some, some of it stays, but not for the actual flight fee on the courses outside the 210 course.
Well, I'd like to see how much this program is benefiting the college financially.
Then, then Dan will take that up in a work session.
I know, but you're going to ask me in a few minutes to vote to approve these services. And how can we approve them when we, when we have questions about them? You don't let me ask questions about them.
Then you, you can abstain or you can vote no. Because other people that are up to speed, they, they might have more information that they can make that decision.
Did ever, if everybody's up to speed, did you all know that we spent $2.25 million on the helicopter program? I'd say everybody's not up to speed.
You see the expenses, but you also see in the other reports what you had income wise. This is a breakdown of your expenses for detail versus a summary.
Where's my income sheet?
You probably have it, do you not?
We never see that income sheet as far as I know.
I'm really hoping the new program gives us the full look at all of our expenses and everything. I think that will help us out.
That's going to help tremendously.
So we're going to go through the next eight or nine months approving bills that are brought to us and saying, okay, it'll all be okay when the new computer comes.
I don't think that was what was said at all. I said, if you have questions on what's in the expenses, then bring them to light and we'll have a work session.
Well, I'm trying to ask some.
Well, we're not going to do it right now.
Well, how can we approve expenses if we can't have discussion or ask questions about the expenses? Isn't that the idea?
If we don't, listen, it's sense of time, because we can bog this thing and be here all night long. Or we can get down to the nitty gritty and we'll have a work session, then you get up to speed. Because right now you're not up to speed.
Well, nobody in here is up to speed.
Well, I guess we will decide that if we take a vote and people think they are.
I just have lots of questions about some of these things. I just have lots of questions about some of these things and evidently you're not going to allow me to ask them. Is that correct?
I'm absolutely gonna allow you, but we, and for the sake of time, we don't have time right now, but we'll darn sure do it tomorrow if you want to.
That's after we approve the bills.
I'm saying...
Questions are about the bills.
If the will read as table and we take the vote not to approve, then we know we need more work.
My questions are about the bills.
Then we'll pick it up later.
May I ask you something? We received in an email the other day that said if we had any questions about the bills or related topics that we were supposed to call Veda and let him know ahead of time and then he would have our answers for us.
No, and what it said, it said we'd have a work session on it after we've already approved the bills. And I don't think that's what the public expects of us, to walk in here and approve the bills without questioning the bills.
Dan, when did you get this material?
Of us?
When did you get this material?
I got this material a week or so ago.
Okay. You had a week to follow through with some questions.
To whom?
To myself, to Dr. Nolte. You had ample time.
Did you personally know that we spent $2.25 million on the helicopter program?
See my sticky notes on all the expenses? Hell, yes.
Okay. Okay. And you're okay with that?
I know what we have coming in income wise, too.
How come you don't share it with the rest of us?
I don't think I need to wipe your nose, do I?
Where am I gonna get it?
If you don't know, then ask a question. I do not know what you do.
You're the president. It is up to you to instruct whoever you work with to send out the same information you get to each board member. That's your job.
I think all we need to do is just request it from the office and then they'll just spread it and we could've got it in.
I'm not in a position, Dan, to know what you know and what you don't know. And I would assume if you don't know something, you'll reach out to somebody and get it.
Well, I assume that you, as president of this organization, of this board of trustees, will supply us with all the information that you have.
Let me know what you need. I cannot know what you need and what you don't need, Dan. I'm not a mind reader.
Just send me everything you get until we find what worked.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a confidence that our counselor would correct us if we were doing something illegal with our purchases and expenses.
Well, certainly, if I'm aware of something, I would.
Okay.
Is it okay to ask another question or we shut off from it?
Depends on what it is.
Okay. I don't understand what the home food program is. Can somebody explain that to me?
It's a grant that we sponsor that is for daycare providers. And that grant reimburses them certainly now for eating more snack that they provide for the children in the D30.
And all daycare providers can take advantage of that? Pretty much licensed.
Well, within our, within that service area. Though they go down to Ashland, Little Bitterwell, Water and Olaford County, so.
Okay. Can I answer your question on item 1?
Well...
And you had one more, right?
Well, I was gonna ask some questions on the monthly financial statement, but you shut that down, so.
Okay.
This is not what the public expects of us, though.
Well, I think the public expects you to come to these meetings prepared.
I can't, listen, I've been through that whole thing. I came a lot more prepared than anybody else in this room, including you.
Oh, well, you did.
For the information that I have.
That's obviously not correct.
That also is correct.
I don't think this is the place to have this forum right now. We need to involve...
Quit grandstanding.
You need to supply me with the information I need to have to perform as a board member.
If you don't have what information you need, you need to reach out for it. That's your job as an adult.
It should be sent to me like it's sent to you. You are no more entitled to information than anybody else on this board. And if you received it, we should have all received it.
I always feel like I can ask for information that I feel like I really need to know. And this time, I figured that we were going to have more discussion about these reports and so we wouldn't do it in an open meeting. We wouldn't do it on a board meeting night. We can have an open meeting, but we don't need to do it on a board meeting.
I'm more than willing to accommodate people's need to know, because that's what we're here to do, just like that. But we're not gonna do it right here in open session. There's too many other things we have to get to. Okay, you had another question? You had on 1A. Was that all your questions on 1A?
Yes.
What about 1C?
Yes.
Okay.
On number four, I had a lot of questions, but those are the ones you don't want to discuss, so.
Okay. All right. Well, then, if you want to have a work session on those items, then I am more than happy to do so.
Well, it seems like the public would like to know where their money's being spent. And I think that's what these open sessions are for, so the public will know. And I'm sorry you all have someplace to go tonight other than this meeting. And if you can't complete the assignment of this meeting and that's taking care of the public trust, then maybe it's time to step down.
I am offended by that statement. And I think that was rude of you to say that, because this is my priority.
Okay, then you should be able to stay to get this done.
I don't have any problem with it.
Somebody does.
Veda, would you be able to provide all of that information tonight if so requested?
No, I, no.
So, can we table this issue, Mr. Reichemorn? If you would like to, you're welcome to make that motion, because there's no motion on the table. And you can gladly table this and we can reconvene and discuss it in your detail so that Veda can come prepared, because I'm afraid you're not gonna get the answers that you're requesting anyways right now. And I think that's gonna be the best way to get all the information collected. And then we can discuss it as a board.
Trustee Harshberger, I would like to say that if any of the board members would like to call my office and make an appointment, I would be glad to go through any of the information, the books, the expenditures, the revenues, how any of these funds flow through at any time. If they would just call and make an appointment, I would be glad to take the time to go through all of their questions and answers and open the books and let them take a look at it.
Thank you, Veda, for that offer. But I think as we go through those things, I think it would do all the trustees well to go through all of them at the same time. Because you might be duplicating so many things and that's what I'm trying to avoid. And so part of this was to get you up to speed. We have a new expense report out that you're seeing. Now, you have a tutorial on what you're looking at so that you can have, you know, more background into them. So when you have questions, some of those questions may be self answered. And if not, then if you have further questions, then bring them forward and we'll have a work session so we can work on them.
But we're also gonna do a work session in June for...
Yes.
In the business...
The middle of June to go over the end this, the end year of this budget and the new budget and show you where we are as of today. Answer any questions that you might have. I've been, our Dr. Nolte has received some emails from various board of trustee members on information dating back 10 years. We cannot, we do not have the time to supply that information. We can probably take a look at maybe five years. But if anyone wants to request at that, at that work session, anything like that, we'll be glad to try and provide that for you.
Well, as a trustee, I'm not making any unusual requests. I'd like to know what's coming in. I'd like to know what's going out. And what's going out, what was it spent for? I think the public wants to know that, too. How much is coming in? How much is going out? What's our debt? How we're handling our debt? I don't think that's unusual. If we table this tonight, then you pay these bills. You can't, can you? If we don't approve you paying these bills, you can't pay these bills, can you? Then there's, then you can't, we can't table it tonight. Doesn't make any sense to put that motion forward.
Mr. Chairman, I think what the real problem is that so much detail can't be done in a short meeting and that we need more time for people who need to ask more detailed questions.
That's correct.
Than a board meeting.
That's right. And that's why we're going down that path, because it's too much with all the detail that you have, which is exactly what we wanted. We asked for it, we got it. And it's gonna take some time to go through it, so we're up to speed on that. And that's where that idea for the work sessions came from, so.
Mr. Harshberger, when our dear friend Floris Jean was chair, didn't she have a Friday work session? Didn't you do that, Floris Jean?
Well, we did that noon before the meeting on the next week, because we were going through the agenda and that was a time to ask questions.
So it's not unheard of to have a work session ahead of a board meeting, right?
It's not unheard of at all. This will take some more time than that. This would take a, probably a lengthy deal because of... It all depends, because what I envision is once we go through that a few times, then I think that the questions will definitely pare down. And so, but the first few, they're gonna be immense, much more than what we can tackle today. And then I don't think staff would even be able to have all their information together to be able to answer all the questions. So to be fair to the time till we could approach the meeting correctly and staff to have the right stuff, then that was the approach.
Well...
Until we get to a point where we're up to speed on those reports and know exactly where we're at.
I would just say that I would very much encourage us to do a work session before every trustee meeting. It would be, I would, I would hope we could do that.
Okay, we'll see, because, well, there, some of them, they just wasn't much to do when I came aboard. So we wanna make sure, wanna make sure that they're fruitful.
Right. And if there's not enough, I would expect you as chair to say, hey, guys, we're not gonna do it this month. But if we just did it, it might help us all become acquainted with everything.
Agreed. Agreed.
We did it for two and a half years. Well, we spent less than an hour in board discussion tonight. We've only been here an hour and 20 minutes.
We've got more to go.
And Mr. Chairman, I would like to say that I don't object to the questions. It's the timing. And I believe we owe that to Mr. Reichemorn, who obviously is not satisfied with the material he's received, that it needs to be done in the work session.
I totally, totally agree, because...
Floris Jean, aren't you interested in the income side of this also?
I didn't say that.
Well, it's not just Mr. Reichemorn that didn't receive the information.
No, but I did ask questions before tonight.
So you know how much came in.
I had what I wanted to know.
But you didn't wanna know how much came in.
I didn't sense that.
Where this money... Well, that's kind of what you're saying to me.
You're making assumptions, Dan.
Again, Veda, can you give us that number tonight? I don't think it's an unreasonable request. I think it's a conversation. You're requesting a balance sheet for the flight program to see where the profits and losses are and where it's balancing. Am I correct, Mr. Reichemorn?
Correct.
So I think that's great. Not only is there a person on this board that doesn't wanna know that or wouldn't love to hear all that information and we should be able to discuss that, but unfortunately, the time, it's not time constraints. It's just the ability to provide that tonight. And I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, Veda, but it is not really...
We provided, Sandy provided that on the flight program. How, from the year of inception, when the last meeting that we had in the fourth year, when you gave that little snippet and they said they wanted it all the way back to inception. That was emailed to, was that emailed to the board? If you have to make that to you. On the Thursday, you guys sent it out on the Monday. It has the tab for every year and every explanation, every line number, the expense for every year and the funds that came in from the VA and the expenditures that went out and the net revenue. Did you receive that? That it hours?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
That's been a while, though.
Was it?
Was it before we came on the board? Was it before some of us came on the board?
Was it in March? I think it was like in March that we went back to the year we started the flight program and gave you all the revenues versus the expenditures.
We can send that again. Yep.
Somebody will need that again.
Okay, it sounds like we need to send that out again.
Please.
Okay.
But I do appreciate that information that we are a flow-through on many different areas, from preschool to the flight program. We are a flow-through area. And so when, I understand where Dan... I can't put words in your mouth, but it would be harder to understand if you didn't know we were a flow-through program.
It's like PEL, you know, for students.
That's the purpose of the class.
Or all these pieces.
Right.
And Mr. Chairman, one more point. The public wants to know, anyone is welcome to come out and ask questions. It's public information.
Okay. Is that the completion of the business agenda? I think so. You had an item four, but you said that was... I had, I was looking down on personnel when you said four. So that was all under the business aspect? Okay. Is that correct, Dan?
Yes, it's all under business.
All right, so that's, everything was pulled for discussion from the consent? Do we, do we take a motion on that then? Yeah, okay. So if that's the final, completion of the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent.
I'll say.
Okay, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Next up, we will move into executive session. So Attorney Curbs.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss negotiations with the Professional Relations Committee of the Dodge City Community College Faculty Association for the 2018-2019 school year contract pursuant to the employer-employee negotiations exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B3. The open meeting to resume in this location at 7:45 PM. In addition to the trustees, the president, the college attorney, and vice president Juworda, vice president Herman, and Dean Osmus should be included in the executive session.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move to adjourn.
Okay, second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, we are now in the executive session. Okay, cameras on, we are now out of executive session. There was no action taken, but we will need to go back into executive session, so Attorney Curbs, you will read.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board continue its executive session to discuss negotiations with the PRC of the Dodge City Community College Faculty Association for the 2018-2019 school year contract pursuant to the employer-employee negotiations exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 75-4319B3. The open meeting to resume in this location at 8:00 PM. In addition to the trustees, the president, the college attorney, vice president Juworda, vice president Herman, and Dean Osmus should be included in the executive session.
Okay, is there a motion?
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. We are now back in executive session. Thank you very much. Okay, all right, we are back in session and we did take action, so I will turn that over to Attorney Curbs.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board appoint Dr. Jane Juworda to the board's negotiating team for the 2018-2019 faculty negotiations.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Our second executive session was moved till next meeting. So with that, if there's any new business, we will be adjourned. And thank you all very much.